All right, let's do it. I'll call to order the Town of Madison Desert Special Planning Board Meeting for March 24th, 2022. Welcome aboard. So we've, again, here we are in the hybrid world where we have participants in person here in the meeting room on C Street and also everybody online. I'll make introductions. Myself, William Hamley, I'm Chair. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller here in the room. We've got Meredith Randolph online. We've got Kristi Anastasia, Vice Chair, online. And we've got Dave Ashmore online. And then in person, also, we've got our Town Attorney James Collier. And let's get the show on the road. Kristy, how about a final quarry Zoom spiel?
All right, welcome to this Mountain Desert Planning Board Meeting. You are on Zoom and hopefully you have Zoom by now. And if you can use the chat function to enter your name, we will have that as a list of folks participating in this meeting. Please just use the chat function for signing in. If you have something you want to say or you want to be recognized in the meeting, please be recognized by the Chair. Also, if you can keep yourself muted when you're not speaking, that will cut down on background noise. And then if you want to speak, unmute. I know some folks know how to use the little hand function, but if you don't want to use that, you can also just wave your hand to get attention. And lots of folks can still join this meeting. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, let's see. Item two on the agenda tonight, why we are all here tonight, and that's to review, approve, and sign the findings of fact conclusion law for the Earl McQuinn Incorporated and Freshwater Stone and Brick Incorporated Quarry License Application. Does that pretty much sum it up, James?
Yeah.
How about you for the record, though, James? Maybe give us a little bit more specificity on what we're looking at and what the board is tasked with tonight. And Kim's got her hand up first, though.
I just need to let you know it has, it was publicized and a Butters notices were sent out.
Thank you.
It was published in the newspaper on March 10th and a Butters notices were sent out on March 10th.
Thank you.
I guess you should confirm that nobody's discovered a conflict in there.
And has anybody else on the, has anybody, I should say, on the board have a conflict of interest with this? None heard.
Okay, so.
Now you're on.
So in looking at the findings back to the law, I reread for the 50th time the section in the MMA manual about this on findings and conclusions and how you do that. And it's a good read, it's both four or five pages long. And then I looked at a form that the planning board had used in this town in the past, which I think I probably helped to develop at some point. I kept in mind that you can go through and do all, every standard in the ordinance, but in this case, the board never did reach a final conclusion on a lot of things and the decision was based on a few very small things. So rather than have a finding of fact conclusion law on every standard. And there was an example in the, on the, in the MMA manual, which was 65 pages long regarding grocery store downstate. So rather than doing that, I stuck to just those items which were of issue on the decision. And I send it out to everybody, all the attorneys for their comments well ahead of time. The only thing substantive that I heard was from Mr. Manahan. And he might want to jump in here at some point, but the he had a few grammatical things and a couple of stylistic things that I changed. And I thank him for that. And then he wanted his clients to be recognized in standing. And I told him bluntly in an email that that was never decided upon the board, they never discussed it. And therefore I didn't put it in. Uh, that's all I really had. The rest of it's pretty simple. And you know, there's there's an attempt in the findings with the findings to match the conclusions. You know, one leads to another.
I would certainly hope so.
Yeah.
Would you like Mr. Manahan to?
Yeah, if he wants to expand on, I think he only had the one big point, which was about the standing.
Yeah, just, just briefly. And thank you for that. I, I I understand Mr. Collier's point, which is that if the board doesn't expressly state that it's acting on certain bases, then it's not acting on those bases. But in my view, it would be helpful for any reviewing body to see, because the board made preliminary determinations, you know, years ago, or at least over a year ago, on many determinations, my recommendation was to specifically state in the findings of fact and conclusions of law that the board is making no determination as to the other criteria for approval or disapproval. So that it's clear in the record that those preliminary votes were just that, they were preliminary. So the court doesn't misunderstand. So I would still recommend that. I, Mr. Collier doesn't think it's necessary. I get that, but I, I still believe that it would be helpful, if not, certainly not critical, but I just think clarity is better. So that's really my only point.
So I'll take it from here with Mr. Manahan's point, which was well taken, but I, I don't know if it's a personal thing to me, or if it's a more rural urban thing, but I quoted several cases to him from Canada, the Ogopogo case and some others. I've always believed that if you don't do something, you don't do it. And there's this theory, I'm like some lawyers, especially in the big city, that you gotta say that you're not doing it. And I'm thinking, if you don't do it, you don't do it. And basically saying, you're gonna say that you're not doing it. I didn't want to say anything. We're not making findings and everything else, so we don't have to say, we're not making finding on everything else. We don't have to say that. And I also don't want to specifically, this is really in the weeds, Mr. Chairman, but I don't want to specifically back the board into a corner of saying that they're not making findings. They never said they were or they weren't. Know what I mean? They made their findings on several narrow things. They never took final votes on all other stuff, and I'd just like to leave it hanging myself. For example, if the court, God forbid, sends this back to us and we can deal with it, then we will be locked in.
I mean, I'd like to paint the picture, though, that the board went through the QLL section by section and had had, had a decision on each section that we went through and reviewed. I mean, and that.
Then we should have another meeting. I'll go back to the records. Do a hell of a lot of work. And we've got probably a 65 page thing like you did on the hand up. That's what that relates to, in my opinion, is this long thing.
Yeah, of course.
And I didn't want to do that.
I, I, I would think that well documented process and those decisions on those specific sections, you know, are, are clear and documented and have been vetted and decided upon.
But they're not decided upon because there were preliminary votes and not final votes. And my feeling, which I stated eight, nine years ago, which Mr. Baer has never liked, and I can understand why, is that when you do an application like this, you might have something at the first beginning and then on sound, for example. And then a year later, you might discover while reviewing some of their topics, something that relates to sound. And therefore your vote isn't final. So, and the case law is clear that if you don't say the final votes, if you say the preliminary votes, you can change them later. And I wanted to give the board the room to do that. In the manual, it does talk about when you're doing these, it says to address standards so that the board, the court will know why you made the decision. And in that last night of discussion, Mr. Mr. Dave Hashmore and Meredith and others were pretty specific about why they made the decision. And that's all, that's all I tried to put into the findings and into the conclusions, just the decision, thinking behind that decision. Not everything else.
So what do you recommend?
That's what I recommend, that's what I give you. Stick to this, this is the only thing.
And we have a motion for we essentially have two looking at it, in, in, in some, we have essentially two findings of fact and two conclusions of law.
It's four findings.
But relative to the two topics, the, the board was deliberating on February 9th.
Right. And I didn't stray very far from the motions themselves, which I quoted words and all. Didn't make any typos, I quoted what the official minutes said.
Any comment from the board? On where we're at?
Can I just ask, because I'm having a hard time following this legal stuff? Am I correct in understanding that what they're saying is that we've made a bunch of preliminary votes, findings, but the final vote on the application is only relevant to the findings of fact and conclusion of law on those few issues and therefore all of our preliminary decisions are sort of we haven't finalized them? Is that what we're?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Manahan was trying to argue that, or trying to argue to me that we'd like us to say something about all those and that we haven't made any decisions, or we have one way or another, and I just, I just want to leave it.
Well, haven't, just to be clear, that, that was, I was saying, you know, as, as the chairman just said, you know, there were some preliminary decisions, but I was saying that they were preliminary and I just wanted to be clear that they were preliminary and that the, and more, and I guess the most important point, that the board's decision is not based on those preliminary determinations.
Right. And the reason, one of the reasons I didn't want to do that was Mr. Baer had argued a dozen times, at least a thousand times, that we should do just the opposite. That those decisions were made and it was yeah, I think it's an equitable argument that they have materially changed their position and spent time and effort over the years and those should be considered final. And I just didn't want to get into that whole argument. I just wanted to avoid it altogether. I'm trying, Mr. Chairman, to keep it simple. Simple, 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 succinct.
So there's been a comment that on each of those items, there were different board members voting on them. And on each item, some, some people have left the board. So if those were preliminary findings in a different group of board members do a final vote, I'm a little confused on how that what that, what that would mean.
Well, first of all, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we don't, we don't have to worry about that, right? At this stage, because we're not voting on the whole thing. But the short answer going forward is that you don't, you can have different board members vote on any, something. Indeed, if, heaven forbid, the chairman was to die tomorrow and you had a new chair, the board died and a plane crashed and all turned over, the votes would still be there. So the case law on that is very clear. But here, you're only voting on the limited thing that I have.
Kristy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, just for clarity, the document that we have that says the Mountain Desert Planning Board Statement of Findings and Conclusions. At the very end, like the end of it, right before it says where folks are voting in favor, voting against, there's a paragraph right above that that says, based on the stated findings of fact, findings and conclusions, the application to approve a plan quarreling is denied for the reasons stated in the aforementioned stated motions. I mean, doesn't that paragraph cover what we're talking about? It's, it's saying that we're voting in favor or against it based on the findings of fact, findings and conclusions of law. I mean, I thought that's, that's what this document said. I mean, it doesn't say that we're voting in favor or voting against based on anything preliminary or anything that isn't a finding of fact or a conclusion of law.
James. I think she's right. Speaks for itself. Raise up Salacuter, the thing speaks for itself.
Oh, say that again?
Raise up Salacuter.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
See, the only Latin I know.
Sorry, you've got your hand up? Sure.
It's just a question. If I've read the, the draft correctly, it, it, it talks about in, in, in response to the community of Hall Quarry and Butters of, of the quarry itself as a question. But isn't this really about the community of Mount Reserve, the citizens of the town of Mount Reserve? And I know that people have been before you representing families that live across the South that don't live in Hall Quarry, for example. And, and I think that there are people that have raised concerns with you over time that are not just residents of Hall Quarry. So I just think, to be completely fair to everybody, you represent the town of Mount Reserve, people have been before you that have lived in Hall Quarry, that do live in Mount Reserve, would it be wise to mention town citizens, the community of Mount Reserve rather than Hall Quarry?
So I, that's a good question, and I think that's also something we spent quite a bit of time on at the February 9th hearing where the, the second findings by the board addressed the much larger community-wide question about the QLO, the board's mission, and specifically the QLO purpose of Section 1.2, kind of looking at the broader, bigger picture of the impact on the community. And I think what the, the board was trying to achieve with that second finding is mentioning and putting into perspective the, the community human impact of this activity on, on a, on a much larger scale. So we had a very finite finding on with the, the first issue of the, the, the title right and interest to the property. And then the board looked at it. I'd like to think more global aspect with the second finding. And, and there was quite a bit of discussion about that.
Chairman, how, how does this fit with this matter of standing based on what Mr. Manahan's clients?
Yeah, I, you know, and I'll let James answer that, but you know, I, I, James, I, I would be, and believe me, I, I know not to step in the shoes that don't fit, but from a legal perspective, I'm not feeling a burning need to identify standing at this point.
No, I took that, as I said, about Mr. Manahan's clients, he encouraged me in the, in looking at the minutes to include them. And I said, as I said earlier, that the board had not made that decision, therefore I would not put it in here. The standard which we discuss many times over the last 10 years, many times, is very clear. It's the leading cases Cumberland Farms, Brooksby Cumberland Farms, where the, and I apologize to the board because I'm repeating myself. Mr. Brooks lived on a street and there was a gas station on the corner. Traditionally standing was a Butters adjoining. And then in some towns like Far Harbor, they would take a radius. And Brooks become a farm case, Mr. Brooks said, well, I have to pass that smelly gas station every time I turn on the corner. And so the law court in that case adopted the neighborhood test. If you were in the neighborhood. And then there were subsequent cases after Brooks, which talked about what's the neighborhood. So the issue of standing is very limited. It's limited to those directly affected. And so as a lawyer and not as an architect, I don't want to suggest that someone in Somesville is standing or Northeast Harbor or Otter Creek. They don't. So that's, the board didn't find that whereas the, the neighbors who live nearby, some of them are literally adjoining and other ones could be said to be in the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, you can see now that doesn't jive with what you just said.
Right, so.
I'm really looking for some clarification.
Yeah, so. That's a political question, right?
Yeah.
That's a political question.
So, well, if, if, if you're addressing in one of the points that this affects the health and welfare of the town, but we're not going to have standing outside of the.
So I, I think there, you know, I, I think we're kind of splitting legal hairs here, but what we were, you know, our second finding was specific to the QLO purpose of Section 1.2. And of course, I don't have my QLO, QLO. Yeah, please.
I mean, you're, you're right, nine. This Anastasia moved that, looking at and thinking of Section 1.2 of the quarry license ordinance and based on the testimony of the Butters and numerous neighbors over the years, that their health and general welfare would be adversely impacted by sharing a residential zone, neighborhood, and community with an operating quarry in which adverse impact is likely to be exacerbated by decreases in minimum loss area and resulting in resulting increasing density, therefore the board denies the application. So that's part of 1.2, Article 1.2 of the quarry license ordinance.
But specifically the, the, the Section 1.2 purpose of the QLO, you know, it, it, and bear with me while I read that is that the, the purpose of this ordinance is, is to put into law minimum removal on reclamation standards and municipal procedures to regulate the quarreling of rock or stone while at the same time respecting the rights of pre-existing operations. These standards and procedures are intended to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare and to minimize the adverse impact of quarreling to the town, abutting property owners and citizens of the town and wildlife and natural resources by A, preserving and protecting surface and groundwater quality and quantity for current future use of the town and/or its residents. B, preserving the town's natural resources, property value, and their future ability to be an asset to the town and its residents. And C, controlling the amount of potential pollution that could be discharged into the town's environment. So, again, I, I feel like the board addressed the bigger issue here and the impact, potential impact upon the town as a whole. However, I don't feel that the board had to recognize standing beyond the immediacy or adjacency to the quarry. Like, I, I felt like the board's decision, th- those are kind of two, kind of sep- separate but somewhat related issues.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I agree 100%. You can't, you can't take those injuries, right? If I, if I have a dispute with Kim and get in a car accident, you sue. The hell, you're a third party, you're, you're a stranger to the action between Kim and I in the car accident. If I live in Pretty Marsh, this is a fine area of town and there's a lot of people in Pretty Marsh. But that's got nothing to do with Hall Quarry, so it's going to be very difficult. So don't argue with me or the chair, this is the standard except for law court. It's the, the neighborhood, that, that is a bad term, but it's the area around. Therefore, you have to show a particularized injury that is going to affect you particularly. And it's really difficult to show if you don't live in Hall Quarry.
Exactly, what I do. But I feel like somehow I feel like I'm being limited. And
We are.
Well, wait a second, if I may. You take noise. Noise does not just affect the aliens or the shakervitzes. It affects the Manahans, Mr. Manahan's clients, it affects everybody in the neighborhood. Now you folks address noise. So noise doesn't stop, we know that, we, we talked about it, noise does not stop at the neighbor's lives. So I, I guess what I'm trying to get at, if I may, is going forward, if this thing goes forward and it may, I want to make sure that we are not excluded from participating because of some legal standard. That's what I'm trying to get at. Does that make sense?
Of course, you know, and again, I think our second finding, we tried to cast again a broader umbrella over relevance to the town as a whole. And, you know, and again, we had quite a bit of discussion about that. I think as far as participation throughout the process, I think the board was, you know, very fair in allowing all voices to be heard.
I think I can answer this question, generally question. So first of all, you're, you're represented by counsel?
Yes.
Which one?
Kate.
Miss Kate, so you're all set?
All right.
Because you're in there, right? You're in there.
All right.
You're good.
It just seems like it was getting a little muddy with that.
No, there's, there's my, that's all. No, no, you're all set. I got it written there. I say, I'm the no, where did I put that, Bill? The neighbors' first finding, first finding, the neighbors represented by respectively attorney colleague and by attorney Kate, they're standing because they might be affected by the quarry and.
My apologies for missing that.
No problem.
Thank you.
This is maybe a rhetorical question, but so if there are neighbors in Hall Quarry who are not represented by attorneys, they are also outstanding because they're in the neighborhood.
No, what happens then is that they go to Board of Appeals and, and, and the court. It's not our problem, right? They go to the, the board, the court. And then the, the law is very, very clear. They have standing before court. Mr. Baer is all for this because he, he was involved in a case which involved standing. You need to have showed up, stated who you were and said that you were opposed and why. So the short answer to your question is yes, if they showed up, said who they were, said why they were opposed, said that they were opposed and why. All those people have standing, they should have standing.
You mean over the last seven years or when we?
Yeah, over the last, God knows how many years. How long have they been?
I've been here.
Okay, so anybody who wrote a letter or came to a meeting and said they were.
I don't know about the letter writing, I'm not sure about that, I'd have to look into that. But certainly anybody who showed up and made their voice or the letter writing, I'd have to double check that. But that's not an issue for this board, that's an issue for the court.
Thank you.
Meredith, you're not on mute. Any comment or?
Oh, I thought it was on mute. Um, nope.
A background's all blurred. Looks like she's coming out of a special way or something. What is that? Is that, are you doing that on purpose, that, that hallucinogenic? What is that, is that, are you doing that on purpose, that, that hallucinogenic background?
Um, I just, I, it's a, it's a fuzzy background, that's all.
It's the standard setting.
Oh, I'm just old. I don't, uh. That's all I can do to get on the zoom.
Okay, so we need a, a motion on the first finding.
No, I just moved the, proved the whole thing.
You guys hear that?
All is one, one person.
Yeah.
I, I guess, uh, one thing I, uh, to Mr. Manahan's point. Um, we have the choice of not doing anything about it or doing something about it, and I understand why. Um. Mr. Collier didn't recommend it. But I haven't clearly, I mean, if. Mr. Manahan thinks this is an extra step that would give us a bit more security. Have we heard a reason why? Not to do it, then I understand why it wasn't recommended before, but I guess if somebody thinks there's an extra crossing of a T and dotting an I. Um, other people may not have thought it was necessary, but I guess don't see downside to. If he thinks that's a concern, why not, let's just do that.
James.
There's an enormous downside. And I apologize if I haven't been clear on this point. There's an enormous downside, you, you spent nearly a decade. Uh, carefully and skillfully avoiding taking any final positions except for the ones that is in early findings and conclusions. At the last possible minute. Um, you decided. That. To deny the application based on reasons which in theory you could have decided on parts of years ago. So. Mr. Ashmore and others have stated over the years. James keeps saying we're not doing anything final, and that's true. And then to turn around now and say that you did do something final. I don't think that's how everybody thought that what they were doing. And I would prefer to give you as much flexibility as possible. To go through things and later on, if this comes back from the court. And go standard number one. Our findings are, our conclusions are. And then you can discuss it and vote on it.
Sorry, I thought Mr. Manahan was saying we should clearly make a statement that none of those other votes were final votes and the decision was all made. On what we stated and all those other, that we were just making an official statement saying all those other votes are not a final conclusion. Our decision is solely made on what our findings of fact and.
But I, again, you could turn it around the other way and say, well, maybe you want them to be final. So I just, I just wanted to leave it open and not discuss it.
We want it to be clear, Mr. Collier, for, I think the board wants to be clear for the court or any reviewing body that those determinations were not final, and what you're suggesting right now is. Maybe there's a possibility that a reviewing body could conclude that they're final, and that is, seems to be directly at odds with what the board has been saying.
Well, that's up to the board, right? They can do whatever they want.
But, but you just sit, what, what, what's troubling is you said that. That it's clear that their determinations are not final, so we don't need to say that, but now you're saying it's not clear. And so, and you want to be able to sort of hold out the potential that maybe they were final, which could be very confusing for a court.
Yeah, I, 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 I am, uh, not as smart as you and all I think you're doing is going, looking at the head of a pin and trying to count angels.
Well, it's not the head of a pin if the main Supreme Court has said that it's helpful to have clear findings and conclusions of a law. James.
Then they should listen to you. They should listen to you and.
Well, I hope they do, but I can't obviously, you know, I, all I can do is request.
Well, so can a, at this point, can a court find that the. Previous votes are final votes, not preliminary votes?
Yeah, a court can do whatever they want, you know, of course you can't trust them, right? The, my, my theory would be that they would not. But could they, yes, it's like, can you sue somebody, you can always sue somebody. So. My short answer is I think they would not because we didn't say that they were.
I don't see anything wrong with putting that statement in there. Um, I, I don't see. I, I, I would like to understand. Uh, why it shouldn't be in there, but I, I, I still don't understand why it shouldn't be in there.
Yeah.
James. I, I'm at a loss, I mean. I. Just the way you said that, Dave, you said. You don't understand why it should be in, you don't understand why it should be out. So why do something just because you don't understand why it shouldn't be done? My theory was.
James, that isn't what I said. I, I said, I, I don't understand why it should not be in there. I, I. I didn't say I don't understand why it should be in there. I mean, you're, you're the one that's saying that there are reasons why it should not be in there, and I don't fully understand what you've said so far.
So if you understand why the, whatever it is that you want to put in there, then go ahead and make a motion and. Go for it.
Let's let Mr. Baird say whatever he's. Got his hand up.
Thank you, uh, may I, may I, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you, I think that the record over the years will speak for itself. We spent hours and hours on virtually every standard. And your votes. Will stand for whatever the court decides they stand for. Uh, final or preliminary, I don't think you're saying tonight that everything that you've done for the last five or more years. Was always preliminary, it wasn't, those votes are plainly votes that were thought about. Long and hard and carefully. Most of them were unanimous, uh, only one was by just one vote. And. You chose not to go back and revisit any of those. At the last minute, you're being asked when a hail Mary passed to say, oh, we didn't really mean any of that. That's absurd. I, I have done this work for thirty four years and I've never known. Of a town board to get to the conclusion, especially of a seven or eight year process. And say, well, we're not quite sure that, that, that that's what we really meant to do. This is bizarre beyond imagination. Um, and I don't think that putting something in the record tonight. Is going to. Outweigh. What the record itself will reflect, which is thousands and thousands of pages of testimony and transcripts. Where you thought long and hard about every vote you took, every vote you took. That's all I've got, so.
My, my follow up to that, Dave, is that. I had a feeling. If we went down this path. That Mr. Bear would say stuff like that, Mr. Manahav would say stuff, other people would jump in. My theory was, I just didn't want to talk about it.
This is exactly why we need this, Mr. Collier, right? Isn't, it, it's exactly why we need this language, because what Mr. Bear is saying is that he's going to argue to the court. That the board made final decisions on all these matters, and the board clearly did not, and so the, the way to make sure that Mr. Bear can't make that argument and say, hey, the board decided all these things. And therefore, uh, I'm going to require the permit be issued because the board's made a determination on all these matters in the event. That Mr. Bear has some success on the road issue, which is what you really made your decision on. The court needs to know that you, that the board would not want that. And the only way to do that is to say, we have not made final determinations on the other standards.
So. As you know. I'm only an instrument, you know? So. Apparently I'm an asshole too. But, uh, when it comes to this.
Mr. Shinkovitz, you gotta turn your mic off.
When it comes to this, I can only do.
Hold on a second. Jerry, turn your mic off, please.
On.
No, you're, you're still hot.
If you are the host, you might be able to shut people down.
I'm not, somebody else has to do it.
She just woke up.
I haven't actually had to do it, but, uh, I know it's possible. The host should be able to mute everybody.
Not, not that.
No, I'm sorry, no.
I am.
For the distance, I think you can look at them and mute.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Right there.
Mm hmm, done.
Thank you.
Is he muted?
Yeah, yes.
So as I was saying, as an instrument of the board. As an instrument of the board, my job is to reflect. What the board. Was doing. And they did not say. Unless the chair can tell me otherwise. The board did not say at the last meeting. That all their decisions were final or they weren't final. Do, if the board wants to go through that exercise, God bless them, go to it. But they didn't do that, so as someone who's trying to reflect what the board's doing. I didn't want to touch on this subject with a ten foot pole.
Just to be clear, you don't have to go through all the findings to include this sentence, you just have to say that you didn't go through all the findings. That's all it is, you just, you, you, it's a, it's a statement that you did not make conclusions on those other criteria. Just a, I thought Mr. Katz had his hand up.
You're on mute, Mr. Gates.
Sorry, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I just wanted to. Fall up in support of what Matt said before, I mean, it. I, I've sat through at least a couple of years of this and. On several different occasions. The board made it, I think fairly clear that all those individual votes on all the individual criteria. Were subject to final votes. And those final, that's point one, point two, those final votes. Never took place. And it's very simple just to acknowledge in one sentence. That those final votes never took place. As Matt just pointed out, it's a. It's a one sentence. Amendment to, to the motion. And it makes it clear what everyone other than Mr. Bear seems to agree. Is the history, the correct history of this matter. So it encouraged the board to. Follow that, that counsel, thank you.
Dave, how do you feel about that suggestion?
Well, um, I'd like to know how the, other board members feel, I think everybody knows how I feel about it.
Christie.
Um, well, I'll go back to the, uh, fancy Latin, uh, res ipsa loquitur. Um, I like the statement that's on the bottom of our statements of findings and conclusions from February ninth. It, it doesn't address this issue. Of whether the other things were final or not final. But it does address that the findings of fact, findings and conclusions. Were what led to the decision. So I, I could be swayed, but I, I don't. I don't know why, it, it's hard for me to understand why we need to. Put ourselves in a place where we say that. Some of these areas were final or they were preliminary. Because the important part is where we spent time on the findings of fact and conclusions.
Meredith. Thoughts?
Um, I guess I. I don't see a real, I, I guess I just don't see a negative, uh, is. Um, I feel like saying that those were all preliminary votes were based on the information that we had at the time. Uh, and. So Mr. Baird's point of we spent so many years on this and careful decision, but part of the reason why we always left the vote somewhat open. Was because as you pressed for, we got new information and. Wanted the possibility of going back and revisiting things with new information because it is taking us such a long time to go through the application. That's why I think it's actually important for us to say those were preliminary votes based on the information at the time. We came to a conclusive decision. Based on the findings, fact and conclusion of law. Those other decisions. Were left open and therefore they're not, they were never finalized. I don't, I don't, I guess we've got two lawyers, you're saying that would be a good idea, and I. Yes, I don't see any reason not to do that.
Tracy.
I see the merits of it both ways. Um. I just try to get my head around what the harm it would be to include that paragraph.
Want to process it still?
Yeah, it's, I've just still are thinking about the language of it and, you know. Just trying to contemplate the downside, how, how could the, what? If this paragraph sentence or one sentence is included. Um. How could the appeals court misconstrue it? That's what I'm thinking about. I'm not sure, right, well.
I guess the way that maybe nobody wants to say is the assumption is that our findings in fact and conclusion of law are shot down in the courts. So the courts say. They fully reviewed this, they have all the votes, we're trying to stick our foot in the door and make sure that the courts recognize. That we, we'd still want it to come back to us if they were to shoot us down. It doesn't express a lot of confidence in ourselves, but I think. I can understand wanting to make sure that we've got our foot jammed in the door.
Ed, you've got your hand up?
Yes, I do, um. I, I just want to ask, I guess Meredith, um, what additional information? Has possibly come to light, um, I'm not aware of any, and I don't imagine that any board member could be aware of any, because I've been at every meeting. What, what additional information has come to light with the first fifteen criteria that we have been over? What, what reason would there be for those decisions to be anything other than final decisions? I want an answer to that, and I also would like to ask the entire board if it has ever gone back after reviewing. Uh, an application thoroughly. Uh, and said all of its decisions to date are preliminary and gone back and made those decisions finally. That, uh, it's not a practice that I'm at all familiar with. And I want to know if it's a town to mount desserts practice, or if it's the first time that it's ever embarked on this practice.
If I could comment, Mr. Chairman, just very briefly.
Actually, actually, Ms. Mr. Manahan, I think that question was to Meredith.
I, I, we have had new lawyers and new representation, um, towards the end, uh, and they may have. If they feel that they have more information. I, I don't.
The, the time for that was years ago. It isn't now. Though, those votes, you won't know that those votes were final votes, tho- tho- those votes were taken. Some of you begrudgingly cast those votes. But they were final votes. And, and it, it is disingenuous beyond belief that you would go back, uh, at this point in time. Uh, under the ruse that those were not final. What are we going to do, are we going to reopen every issue when the court says that you're wrong on the real estate, uh. Basis for denying our application, are we going to go back and go over every one of those with new hearings? That's the only. That's the only way to get new evidence in. You've heard all the evidence. All of the votes are in, so to speak.
Just one example is the stormwater changes.
Mr. Manahan, you gotta wait your turn.
Yeah.
Please.
Mr. Baird just jumped in, Mr. Chairman.
If Mr. Baird had his hand up and he was replying to Meredith's reply, which was his original question was directed to. So now the board member Dave Ashmore is commenting.
So, and I want to ask Ed if he recalls me asking many times if any of these issues could be revisited. Um, and the attorney advised that they could be revisited. So I, if they can be revisited, how can they be final?
I, I, I have no idea what that conversation between you, uh, between you and, and the town attorney was all about. I, I'd never heard such bizarre talk, quite frankly. I, I don't know what it means to go back and revisit something. If, if you want to revisit it, you do it at that meeting or the next meeting. But once you make a motion and you vote on it, you can't go back and reconsider it. It's essentially what you're doing five years later. You can't, Ed. That's just, can we, any sense to you? You've been in business for, for decades. Does that make any sense to you? That somebody could, could tell you one thing five years ago and then later tell you, well, I wasn't quite sure that I was, that, that's what I meant?
Without any chance, without it.
We've got a couple other hands up too. I'm gonna, wanna address, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kish, uh, I can find it in the record multiple times over and sat through it, as many of my neighbors have as well. Mr. Collier telling you, the board, that at any point, things can be revisited. We can find it in the record. So I don't know what Mr. Baird is talking about. That says to me, nothing was final. That had to say to you, nothing was final. That had to give you the feeling of that. So I don't know how anybody can sit here now and say it was all final because it's in the record that you can go back at any time and revisit these things. You guys were confused, God bless you all, from the get-go on this. I feel bad about that. But you were told you could go back and revisit this at any time, making every decision not final, sir.
Uh, Dan, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you. Um, I'm not gonna derate the board because I, I, I don't think that that's what you guys need. You're all working very hard and have diligently done so. But to give you an example of something that changed, you may remember that the applicant submitted a revised road design with different specifications that changes the stormwater, um, drainage, changes the way that stormwater runoff was gonna flow now apparently under the road, perhaps over the road. That is one of many areas in which the board received evidence, but never voted on uh, on, on those issues, on those specific findings. So I think what I'm hearing to, to help interpret all of this is that all of the people arguing to you tonight are asking the board to be clear. Be clear about what your findings are, what your decision is because it matters. We appreciate it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This discussion is what I wanted to avoid.
Mm-hmm.
All of this discussion. I knew this was gonna happen. That's why Mr. Manahan said you should do something. My response was, hey, things up to lock, but I think speaks for itself. I've never been a believer that you have to do anything that you should, don't have to do. I didn't want to talk about Diogo Pogo, which was a ship that sank. And the neighbors on the dock were, were chastised for not rescuing people. And court said, hey, you don't have to. You had no affirmative duty to go rescue anybody. I've always been a big believer in that. And so if you don't need to do anything, don't do it. Just leave it alone. We don't need to do anything other than Mr. Manahan asking us to muddy in the waters that except, except, sets Mr. Baird. You know, why do it? Why do you have to do it? What's the reason to do it? Mr. Ashmore thinks he's the one to do it. Maybe you can explain why he wants to do it. Is there, Dave, do you have a specific, I want to do it because it'll do X course? Over the, the, looking at the evidence over the years, the items that I was talking about were either the things that Mr. Pellegi mentioned, where something was new. In general, if you have to vote on something, you're gonna stick with it. You have over all these years. But, you know, the findings and the conclusions might be a little different later on. So.
Dave, is there any language you want to add or subtract from the current draft statement of findings and inclusion of law?
Um, well, I, I'd like to add, answer James's question first. One of the reasons why, um, I'm, I consider that a good idea to put that in is that there are three attorneys that are saying they think it's a good idea to put it in. That's.
And, Dave, could you, Dave, could you summarize what, what that should be?
Um, what do you mean?
I mean, what, what specific language are we, are you aiming at there? That might align with the three attorneys' recommendation?
Well, I think it's a statement, um, that Mr. Manahan has asked to have put in. I like, I like his, his sentence.
Can we get that sentence?
Yeah, except for one thing. I, I had asked what, um, the opinions of the other board members and I haven't heard your opinion yet.
Thanks. Uh, so I, so I, I've been part of this for eight years and I think seven of it, I've been chair and, you know, it's, it, you know, I definitely say it was a, a challenging process, you know, on so many levels. You know, we had, we had an ordinance we were all familiar with. We had incredibly technical testimony. We had consultants. We had a decipher and it was a, a long, long, long road. And, you know, as, as, and I'd like to think as we were traveling down that road and reviewing the individual sections of the QLO, we were, I, you know, trying to be as inclusive, fair, open to comment on the process. Our, you know, I think we took our time. We didn't rush anything. We were deliberate in our due diligence. You know, and we had, of course, COVID on top of it all. So what I'm getting at is that as, you know, for me personally, and I'm, I'm not trying to turn the turtle on its back here, but when we were wading through these and I understand, you know, there, there is an issue of totality here to borrow Christie's word again, is that when we were reviewing this and we were going to that much detail and that much time investment and we were having votes and, and finding and, and decisions on each section that we were, we were at that time making a finite decision on something and moving on. However, multiple times it did come up during the process that, hey, look, you know, if at the end of all this, the board determined, ooh, maybe we need to go back and peel that pineapple of that particular section that we were enabled to do that. Well, here we are. We're, we're at the end. We've got a, a, a long road of decisions behind us. And, you know, my personal opinion is unless I hear that, you know, there is a burning need from the board to go and, and revisit a, a particular section that those decisions are decisions and they, they stand. So.
Mr. Chairman, that's the section there and right at the bottom. Mr. Manahan wanted to add.
I'm gonna have to start bringing my reading. Yeah, I know, I got it. And so, and so Dave, this is the section again that Mr. Manahan was, was suggesting we add is that the board makes no.
Right at the, right at the end, right at the very end.
They're in red.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's at the end of everything, just before you sign it. That's where he wants to put it.
That the board makes no determination with respect to whether the application meets any of the applicable performance standards for existing queries in Article 6.2, with the exception of Article 6.2A2 discussed above or any of the performance guarantee requirements in Article 7. Yeah. What do you think of that, Dave?
Well.
And did I answer your question?
Uh, yes, yes, you did. Um, yeah, and based on what you said, um, I think everything you said was true. Um, I don't, um, what, the, what bothers me the most is I had asked that question several times with the thought that if there was, if there was an issue that needed to be revisited, it could be revisited. Um, and I, I don't remember hearing that if new evidence came forward, but I can understand um, if new evidence came forward, that would, that would drive that. Um, so I, I'm inclined to, um, agree that maybe we don't, we don't add it in there.
Did anybody in the audience have their hands up? And sorry, I was focused that way. Ed, Ed, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, I do find it, and I keep repeating, using the word disingenuous, but you, you're, you're even contemplating making a, a finding that everything was preliminary except the one, the one criteria that you found against the applicant. That one you're gonna say is final. This is, this is, this is uncharted water for me. Um, and, and I'm still waiting, uh, Mr. Chairman, for you or any member of the board to tell me if this has been a practice of the board in the past or it's the first time that we're embarking on it with the McQuin freshwater application.
I can answer that, Tom.
I'm gonna let James answer that and I can chime in.
So the, the full discussion, which I, I didn't want to get into, the full discussion about this for many years, it's been shorthanded by some people here tonight was, you can look back in the minutes, this was a long time ago, that in general, you would always stick with your votes, right? Because it would be unreasonable, unfair and possibly immoral to not stick with a vote for, for the applicant and for everybody concerned. However, if there was a new, new information on something that arrived from Tibet, by Magic, or there was a change to the application which meant a change circumstance, that, that would be extraordinary. And then the board might reconsider something. It would profit no one to do a review standard and look at it thirty-seven times, right? Once is enough generally. So when I said that and then I repeated it over and over is that you look at something, you make a decision. I don't want to say that it's final, final, but I would think that it would be final unless there was a damn good reason not for it to be final. And that's all I was saying about it being preliminary versus final. That has been misconstrued like you're gonna reconsider it like flavor of the month. That's not the case.
Ed, I'll chime in to the, in the history of ten years of being on the board. You know, there, there has been a, a rare, a rare, rare occasion. And usually it's a, some kind of procedural issue as we wade through, say, the conditional use application process where we, we, for instance, get through six A, B and C and we get to the final vote and someone says, oh, whoa, wait a second. You know, on section six B eight, I don't think we, we, we understood really what the, the fence requirement, what the fence middle was or something because of this, you know, this thing on this page. I mean, that, and we, we go back to that section and we review it. And if we need to address it, then we address it. And if not, we just carry on and the, and the, the vote stands. You know, the, and again, all along, you know, this process, I had been, you know, operating with the understanding that our votes stand unless the board says, oh, whoa, wait a second, we, we gotta peel the pineapple on this section again. So, you know, it's, it, it is by not, by not any means, as long as I've been chair, uh, standard practice, go back and, and open the can of sardines again, unless there's, there's something, there's new, there's something the board determines we missed, or, or it's just some procedural error. So.
And what I, what I want to say with Mr. Manahan, who I see has his hand up over there, but what I wanted to say was that when I read his, his thing in his email, I thought, now that's a can of worms I don't want to get into. And I don't want to say anything. I don't want to suggest to anyone, least of all the applicant, to whom we also have to be fair. Oh, it's all open for bids here and the price is right. You can change anything. You can do anything later. I didn't want to suggest that. So I thought we'll just let sweet and dogs lie. What we've done is in the record, it speaks for itself.
And Judy, you've had your hand up for a while. So, yeah, I see Mr. Manahan's.
I would just like to ask why all along through all these years, Mr. Collier has said over and over and over again that any issue could be revisited until we got to the end of the process. And then when it was suggested to go over the noise issue, all of a sudden, Mr. Collier says, you don't want to go there after telling all of us for years that we could revisit, especially the noise issue. And the votes that were taken that were, they were not considered final votes. They were considered things that could be revisited. And now the, the tune has changed to.
No, it hasn't changed. That's, that's unfair. Did you hear what I said?
Excuse me, I believe I was speaking. I heard this a couple of, uh, Zoom meetings ago that, no, you don't want to go there. You don't want to go there. And that was after, like I said, for years, we were all told that issues could be revisited and that nothing was final. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Manahan, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry for jumping in, uh, earlier out of turn. Um, but these do think, these things get, you know, sometimes you want to jump in and I apologize for that. Um, I, I would just say, I guess, if, if the board members would ask themselves the questions as to why Mr. Baird is so opposed to putting this language in there. And I'll, and I'll tell you the reason. It's because he wants to be able to argue before a court that, A, that your decision based on the motions that are in the findings of fact that Mr. Collier drafted are invalid. I don't think that he will succeed in that, in that, uh, approach, but he, but he could. You never know, right? The public general, general health, safety and welfare is, is a standard that he's gonna argue is too vague and the court should, should strike that down. And he's gonna argue that the title writer interest finding with respect to maintaining the road, uh, is improper. Again, I think he'll fail on that, but if he wins, what he wants to be able to say to the court is, that's it. Now you just issue the permit because the board was done on everything else. And it's clear that, oh, I get what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, that you did reach all of those preliminary conclusions after a lot of work. But it's also clear that there've been, there has been other evidence submitted and other issues that have come up recently, including the stormwater issue that Mr. Pellegi mentioned. Um, and the applicant's changes to the application which affected those stormwater issues. And the board frankly didn't want to, in, in the February meeting, didn't want to spend a whole ton of time going over all those potential new evidence issues when the decision was gonna be made with respect to the road. when the decision was going to be made with respect to the road issue. So why spend all that time? And so, I, I think what the board should consider is, would it want to at least have the opportunity to look at those findings, maybe only one of them, maybe six of them, maybe 10 of them? If the court reverses the decision, as Mr. Baer will no doubt argue that it should, because if you don't put in this sentence, he's going to argue those, now, we're going to obviously disagree, as Mr. Collier says, we will say to the judge that those are preliminary. Um, the board didn't, they're not in the findings and conclusions. Mr. Baer is going to say, hey, there are votes, look here in the record, there were votes. And so they were final votes, and there's no indication they were reconsidered. So we'll argue about that. But the point is, and the main Supreme Court has said this, look, make it clear, make it clear for us so we don't have to wonder about this. And all I'm asking is, if the members of the board think that they would want to, if, if this were ever to come back to the, if this, if the court were to reverse the bases in the findings of fact, would the, would the board want the court just to issue the permit? Um, or would it want to be able to hear it again and at least consider whether those other factors were something, another reason, one or more of those factors might be another reason to deny the permit? That's all I'm asking. And this sentence, if you just add this one sentence, and it's simply saying, we haven't decided that, court, we just, we haven't decided those finally, we may only take five minutes if you send it back to us, and we may just uphold our prior decision and issue the permit, but we at least won that opportunity.
Mr. Manahan, just, you know, and, and again, I think on many occasions I've demonstrated, I'm, I'm not an, an attorney, I'm an architect, but, um, don't, don't you think if we added a sentence like that in, at each hour here, that that, that weakens the, 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 the ground that we have covered over all these years, I mean, of.
Absolutely not. It strengthens it, actually, quite to the contrary. It, it totally strengthens your decision by making it less susceptible to reversal on appeal, less susceptible to a potential misunderstanding where the court's just going to issue the permit in the event that Mr. Baer were to succeed in court.
How do you know that they would just issue a permit?
Well, I don't think they would. I don't, I hope they wouldn't just issue the permit, but Mr. Baer will argue that you made determinations on these factors, and therefore, the court should just issue the permit. That's what his argument will be.
I, I mean, but how, how is that, how is that relative to any board's past findings on it, on an application that, you know, we, we, like, like our decision last night on a fence on Route 102, and we go through the conditional use approval process, and we have findings on 6A, B, and C in Section 5.9, and then at the end, and at the end of that process, it's not, it's, it's just preliminary?
No, just let me give you an example. It, it, so, so let's say that in a decision, you made findings of fact in favor of the applicant on nine out of 10 review criteria, right? So you said, we, we find in favor of the applicants, and that's in your findings and conclusions document. But on one of them, you say, the applicant has not met the burden, so we're going to deny the permit. If that then goes to the court, and the judge says, finds that you were wrong on that one, and that you should have, in fact, found that the applicant had met the burden on that one, that's then the only reason that the board would not have issued the permit. So the court may very well and likely would say, okay, since you only made a mistake on one, and you found on the other nine that the applicant had met its burden, we're hereby ordering that the permit be issued, right? So, so the court would therefore find that the permit needs to be issued. And what I'm saying is, that, there's no question that you're not making a positive finding for the applicant on, in the, on the face of the findings document. What Mr. Baer is going to try to argue is that if you go back to the record and, and, and look at those preliminary votes, that they, evidence that you really intended to have, have a vote in favor of the applicant on all those, and you don't want to revisit those if the court were to find in Mr. Baer's favor on the points in the findings of fact. And what I'm saying is, that could happen if the court agrees with Mr. Baer, and, and as a matter of insurance, you should include this sentence to, to ensure that it won't happen.
Ed, you've got your hand up.
I do. Um, I appreciate Mr. Manahan thinking he can script what I'm going to argue. I, I will point to, to, to the record when, when we get to court. Uh, I do agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, accepting, uh, or incorporating uh, what Mr. Manahan is asking for into your decision now, at a meeting that I understood was simply to reduce to writing what you had all said, and was in the minutes of the, uh, February 9th meeting, or whatever it is that we all last got together, and we all said goodbye, thank you, we're all done here, we're all done. Isn't this great? Uh, I don't know how many times we all recognized that that was the last meeting until we have to have another one now. Uh, but the court's going to see through this. If, if you, if you, at the 11th hour, decide to say, oh, everything else we've done doesn't really count yet. And, and I appreciate your candor, Mr. Chairman, in letting me know that, um, it is not the board's practice, so that, uh, that, that's helpful to the equation as well. Um, I, I ask you to please, uh, do the right thing tonight. Sign what you've been given, uh, and say goodbye again. Thanks.
All right, guys, let's, let's try to move this somewhere, hopefully forward.
Can I just ask, uh, if we can, so there is this issue that there was, there was that whole issue of stormwater. Um, and there was evidence that we, we were like, oh, we're turning this application down, so we don't need to go there. So does that adequately, um, mean that we, we made the decision, you know, that the issue is really, whether there'd be any other further discussion, or that, that the courts could just turn around and and issue the permit, but the fact that there is this stormwater issue that wasn't determined, doesn't that provide us, that foot in the door, that, that we are the people who would have to issue the permit, that, that, that fun, one final issue that there, and all of our discussion of, that our decisions are not final. And I understand that that is only to say that if there was no evidence, or there was new argument, but that's what time does, is reveal new things and new evidence. And even Bill, like what you're talking about, generally, our reviews are one night, maybe two nights. We don't usually have new lawyers and new evidence show up halfway through the meeting, but we've had that happen a lot during this process. So I guess, considering that we're adding the factor of more and more time to this whole scenario, I just wonder, that one criteria that there is evidence to, that we haven't reviewed, does that effectively clearly make it, make it clear that if the issue, if our decision gets overturned, it needs to come back to us, or we with any court just say, yep, you guys made all your decisions, we'll just issue them the permit, even though there's evidence you didn't review, and there were subjects you didn't.
Now, the court, the court's never going to say, just issue the permit. In, in order for a permit to be required, what would happen would be, if it was remanded to the planning board, the planning board will continue its review. There's a whole bunch of stuff to be done. The board has a lot of work to do yet. It would have to look at the performance guarantees. I think it had, I think, Bill, you have to go through to do the reclamation stop. There's a number of things which, where conditions will be required. I mean, it just, it doesn't do that. It's, it would send it back to you for further proceedings and findings, and they.
I mean, let's, let's all remember that we, this, we've been through this already. You know, and, and, and when the court did remand it back to us, I mean, okay, the, the review process continued, a bit more specifically, a bit more further along. But, you know, I, I think the term of the court handing out the permit is just incorrect. I mean, that's, that's not how I, how I have experienced this process to, to play. So again, guys, we, we've got a findings of fact inclusion law drafted on the table here, and I really think we need to get a position on this, on what we're, what we're doing. And Mr. Manahan, you've got your hand up.
I only want to just briefly respond to, uh, to Ms. Randolph's question, which is, which is the fact that there is evidence um, that the board, uh, may not have considered, does not mean that a court would remand it to the board. Um, unless this sentence is added. If the sentence is added, then the court would remand it to the board. And I don't agree, frankly, with the chairman or Mr. Collier, that if, if, that a court would never just order that the permit, the court doesn't issue the permit itself. What it would do is order that the permit be issued based upon, uh, the conclusion that the board has essentially dealt with all of the approval criteria. Uh, I don't think that would happen here. I, I, I actually agree with that, but all I'm saying is it's safer to make sure it doesn't happen. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe you can get a motion to approve.
I've been trying, James.
I, I just don't know.
The language of a motion to propose, or?
No, uh, we used to have a lot of adverse opinions to, to reconcile.
Yeah, and I.
Absolutely. Go for it.
I just, I, I think what Tracy might be saying, if I'm channeling Tracy, is, you know, there's been arguments presented as to why we should be more clear about whether they were preliminary, preliminary or final. And then there's also been arguments about why we should not address this or add that extra sentence, um, almost to keep it, um, ambiguous is not the right word I'm looking for, but just not to be, have it misconstrued what our intentions were. And I don't know that I've heard a compelling argument to do one or the other, which leads me, at least at this point, without someone else clarifying why one would be better or the other, why we wouldn't just leave what we already have in the document right now, rather than add another sentence.
How do you feel, Dave?
I, I said before that I thought I agreed with you. Um, and I, I still do.
And in, in agreeing with Bill, you think that we should add another sentence at the end of that paragraph? Between that paragraph and the, where the voting falls?
No, I, I think that we should not add it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I feel like we've gone in like a million circles right now, so thank you for being super clear on that. I appreciate it. I mean, so do, Bill, do we put a motion forward, that we make a motion to not add anything, or do we just do nothing?
The motion to approve the statement of findings and conclusions as written.
I would, I would agree with that.
I think the biggest thing that makes me uncomfortable with adding everything is that that we, I thought this, you know, we thought that, that the whole thing was over, that we concluded a whole hearing, and so I guess that's the biggest thing that makes me uncomfortable with adding anything right now. Is that it, I just feel like, but it's over, everybody went home, like, we can't. If, if this had been suggested while we're making the motion, I'd be like, whatever, yeah, great, let's add it, that's, gives us a little extra security. Whatever.
So Meredith, are you advocating that we do add something?
I guess I'm saying what has me on the fence is, is the biggest thing is that, what are, how are we having this meeting tonight? Like, the quarry hearing is over. Um, and we, we voted that it was not an extension, you know, that the meeting wasn't being extended, this is a new meeting, but I guess I just.
Meredith, I would agree with you on that. And, you know, I, I've always operated, you know, my personal business and municipal life, that when you make a decision, you stand by it, you know, and, and here we are, we made a decision to get to this point. I'm not hearing a burning need from the board at large to revisit anything in specificity. And we've got, we've got drafted language in front of us to do something with, and bring this to a close. And we, and I tell you, I, I am so proud of the board and the time and the commitment everybody has made into the thorough and dedicated review of this project over the last eight years. And if it goes to court, so be it. But, you know, we've got a tremendous history here of, of in that, of time investment, thought in that investment in this, and I, I stand by everything we've done today on this. So there you have it.
As being told that, you know, to the point that there are issues that we didn't come to a conclusion.
Let the court decide that, Meredith.
That's what I'm saying, is that the, the court should see that and therefore not be going this route. I don't see why they would just say, bypass them and force them to issue a permit when there were, when there was evidence on the table and there were issues to discuss that we chose not to. But I guess even having a, I don't, it doesn't make sense even be having a decision about, I mean, if we all come to an agreement, but the sort of formalizing a decision seems weird if we're thinking that the whole quarry issue is done. How are we able at this point to be revisiting what our last vote was?
Meredith, I, I, again, I, I feel like if we, we re, I, I don't want to use the term revisit, but if we, let's say, modify where we are at, at this moment, I, I still feel that that, that weakens where we stand at this point, in total, from 40,000 feet, looking at the time investment and everything we've been through. You know, we've got, again, we, I'm not trying to hurry this, I'm not trying to push this through, but again, I am a facilitator of a process. And I think we've got a process to conclude here. Unless the board determined that, that we're not at the point of conclusion, but my, as I'm channeling, trying to channel everybody here, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling the wavelength of conclusion.
Kind of the conclusion be that the, the quarry meeting was closed, and we feel that, that we, I guess I, discussing a dread, adding more is indicating that we think we have the right to add more at this point. And I guess that's what makes me most uncomfortable.
You know, again, it's, it stands in the record, Meredith, that we have always had the opportunity to revisit anything that we felt we needed to revisit, but here we are, and I'm, again, I'm just trying to, the gather, gather the sentiment from the board at the moment. I'm not hearing anything like, hey, you know what, we need to go back and peel open Section 62J, or whatever it was on noise, you know, I'm, we're, we're beyond that, and if that were to ever become an issue, from the court's perspective, I would wager that it's going to come back to us for revisitation. But we're at, again, we're at, we're at the point of conclusion of a process, as best as we, we thought we could do it. as best as we, we thought we could do it in eight years with the new ordinance and all the ups and downs and lefts and rights.
So what do you think the motion is?
You know, I.
I'm like, I'm, I don't even know what we're voting on.
I, I feel, I feel like Meredith, some, in some ways, I'm like, taking the GRE for grad school or the SAT or something, you know, and you go and you scribbled that, you select your answer, and then you, oh, should I have done that? And then everybody, you know, everything you've learned in like standardized test taking, they say, go with your first answer. I tell you what, I, I feel like we have our, our first answer here scribbled out for us. And, and I'm cautious, some of the, some of the, the, some of the not so great decisions I've made in my past is where I've gone back and second guessed that, that first inclination. And I, you know, and, you know, and let the, let the courts determine if we were wrong or we missed something or whatever, you know, there, there's a process for that. And I, and I think as representatives of the town, we've, we've given it our all for, to make this the best process for the town and honestly fair to the applicant too.
So I think this gets back to, I mean, isn't this, we're looking for a motion to approve as written?
Yeah.
Do, do we?
Can we not have this written, but have a motion of a non-issue?
Maybe I can make the motion and we can have discussion, would, would that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that the Mount Desert Planning Board's statement of findings and conclusions from Wednesday, February 9th, 2022 are approved as written.
Any second to that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Dave? I, I saw you twitch. Okay, so.
Can I have it just one more time to make sure I got that correctly?
Kristy?
Do you want to read it back, or you want me to read it again?
I would like you to read it again to make sure I have it.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, my internet's unstable. I've got some stuff going on. Um, I make a motion that the Mount Desert Planning Board's statement of findings, findings and conclusions of Wednesday, February 9th, 2022 are approved as written.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second. I'm not hearing any further discussion, so I'll call it, call it for a vote. Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye.
So, Mr. Chairman, I've got a copy here with a draft on it. And, uh, if you'd like to sign and distribute, that Kim's.
Is there to be a date on that, where they sign it?
No, that's the draft.
No, that's the one I put, I am.
Date on the top.
Yeah.
Date on the top?
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Yes, please.
I was hoping that they could just scribble the dates beside the name, but that's a better.
I've got another touch, and they should change those, yeah, does that matter?
Yeah, does that matter?
Scratch that out.
Hold on, I gotta change.
She's got to.
Yeah.
I gotta change it, because Christian's vice chair.
Where'd you do that?
Did you guys hear that?
I'll go back.
We're just adding a date line at the top, and they've still got Meredith identified as vice chair on the signature page.
Meredith just looks, you know.
I think she told me she.
No, I didn't.
But, and actually.
I just wanted to see if you were paying attention.
Actually, that reminds me, Kristy, I, um, I have to give my, uh, end of the quarry, um, hearing spiel. I'd like to remind everybody that we have two vacancies on the board. We have, uh, the two alternate positions are not currently filled. And, uh, if you have, uh, any desire to join the planning board, please contact the town office, fill out the appropriate application. We'd love to have you on board.
Most applications aren't as long. They're contentious, they're quicker, you go through them.
Hey, Bill, do we get like a sign in, sign on bonus if we find someone?
I, I might have to run that by the board of selection.
Okay, just like a commission.
I, I did stop our, the, the applicant we received, uh, the application from, um, that didn't make it to the hearing the other day on the sidewalk and encouraged her to get in touch with the town.
Was she still interested, or she not show up because she lost?
No, she sounded interested. I think it was just a, it sounded like she had something, some schedule issue or something. It wasn't really clear, but I told her, just please come back to the town office and get in touch with Jen, and then let's get you back before the board.
Just say something to James. James, you mentioned that the planning board, um, based, uh, could have done this five or six years ago, based on the facts. Uh, they didn't even know about the road problem, which is when the reason that they denied, one of the two reasons they denied the application. They didn't know about that five or six years ago.
Could have done what five or six years ago?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
What, what could they have done five or six years ago?
You, you said that five or six years ago, they could have come to the same conclusions that they had in these statements tonight.
Yeah, could have done it 10 years ago.
They didn't have a, no, their decision was based on the road, and they didn't know anything about the road until quite recently. And I admire the planning board for having them take this for so many years.
And again, I, I want to state, I'm very proud of our board and the commitment the board's made to the town in this process. You know, I've been in, I've been before a lot of boards in the area, and I think we've, we've got the best board. So, you know, hats off to you guys.
Do we have any more business?
Oh, okay.
No.
Another one I threw down. Please. Oh, I just, I have another one.
Yeah, no, you gotta sign on, sign on the left-hand side of the paper.
Bonsoir. Je te remercie, je sais un petit peu, le petit mot, c'est vraiment mauvais. Now sign where you're supposed to.
I will.
Would you do sign on the wrong side?
I would.
Change your mind?
No. Way to err.
My one of those, why is Christine McDarren?
Good night, all.
That's good night.
Nice, thank you so much.
So it's imperative that the other board members come in and sign with the exception of Dave ASAP, so that they can get a copy of it.
Did you guys hear that from Kim?
She heard it, give him a salute, Dave heard us, so. But where's Kristy?
Kristy, did you hear that?
She said, yes, I'm on my cell phone because my internet is unstable, but I did hear that.
Great, thank you. I, I didn't.
Can we get a motion to adjourn pretty quickly, because I think I'm going to drop off?
Yeah, go for it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Just second it, Kristy.
A second, Kristy, Anastasia's second.
All right, there you go. Meredith made the motion, Kristy seconded it. All those in favor, Meredith?
Aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Aye, 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 aye.
Dave?
David Ashmore, aye.
And myself, William Hanley, aye.